All right, we'll get started. We have a quorum. Counselors, we're ready? All right, so we'll call to order the special meeting for June 28th at 6:00 PM. The clerk will call the role to record the attendance. I am the clerk also, so. Anderson Burgos. Bartley, here. Presnahan. Leahy.
Yes, and present.
LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Lisi. McGee, present. McGivern.
Here.
Roman. Sullivan.
Here.
Tallman.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentin. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
To the Hoya.
And city councilor.
So, for tonight with the special meeting that was called by the mayor, first is a communication, which is a letter from the solicitor's office, host community agreement. Everyone should have a copy of that. Motion would be to receive it.
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number two is from the Development and Government Relations Committee, DGNR. Item...
Mr. President?
Pull it up correctly. So, six A is listed on the agenda.
Two agendas, yeah, the one that was landed.
Which agenda we use?
Yeah, so go to this one.
Which one?
Six A.
One on their desk today?
It'd be six A.
All right.
Which is Committee on DGNR.
Mr. President?
Yep.
This point of order?
Yep.
See, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We've got eight counselors. Are we expecting the ninth?
We are expecting the ninth. It's on the way, or he is on the way. For record purposes, as we discussed after the budget was done, certain counselors could not make tonight's meeting. They expressed that openly.
No, good for them. Good for, I don't care, but we need a ninth counselor, so is...
So, we can move on to other items that don't require nine votes, but the ninth is on the way.
Make a motion, we move to the next item agenda that doesn't require nine votes.
Make a motion to recess.
I'll second that.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is to recess and give the final counselor a few minutes to arrive. They did text that they were on the way. They were caught up. So, motion would be to recess for 10 minutes?
Sounds good.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We stand to recess till, call it twenty after six.
No. Alex, you don't. What's that?
There we go. So, we're back. Make a motion to come out of recess.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, back to item six A, if that's on the agenda that you have, or it's two A on mine.
This one here.
Same thing. So, here, the Committee on DGNR, who was referred to special permit for 45 Longwood Ave. Recommendation that the permit be granted.
So, the motion is to receive and adopt a committee report, grant a special permit with the conditions as listed?
Second.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and grant it. It was signed off by three members. Under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Thank you. Yeah, the applicant came in. She wants to have a salon. It's the corner of Longwood and Oakwood. Oakwood, Mr. President, is one of two dead-end streets off of Longwood along with Brightwood Avenue. Her, she lives next door to that house. Her father owns that house at 45. And, and so she's proposing, like I said, to have a salon, so we asked her a bunch of questions and then we, we developed what we felt were, on both cities' perspective and her perspective, reasonable conditions, which is to have certain days of the week, certain hours as listed, so Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, two to eight. There are no Saturday hours. Parking is only available on street at this time, so parking can only be in front of the house on Longwood Avenue. I think, is it 47, Mr. President? I think it's, it might be 47. I might have said 45. I don't have the address right in front of me.
Forty-five.
Oh, it's 45, okay. Okay, I said it right the first time. So, parking only in front of the house. There's going to be only one person at a time. There's only one chair. There are no deliveries. There's no signage. There's no people waiting, so she was okay with that and we advised her, as we did, the subsequent applicant is going to be here in a minute, that, you know, these things can be revisited. I advised both of them, this, the reason we can put these, this is a special permit, because they're in, they're in either an R1 or an R2 zone, and they want to set up a commercial business. So, it's not, we try not to make it confrontational, but I know the applicants, this is new for them and it's, I mean, it's new for me when I became chairman, so it's, I mean, it was, you know, it's a learning curve for all of us here, so we're not dictatorial. We try to just come up with conversational tactics, just a, just a reasonable compromise, a reasonable solution. So, the committee, after a lot of good questions, felt the ones I listed, and certainly ones I wrote on that permit, were, were reasonable, and we certainly wished her well should this body grant a special permit.
Anyone else? Counselor LaVermont.
Yeah, I'm just curious, for someone with a business of such a salon that a Saturday, is it allowed or that she didn't want to work on a Saturday? I'm just curious to ask.
Well, yeah, so Counselor, what we, through chair, so she didn't really want to work on Saturdays. So, that was it, yeah.
Thank you, no problem.
Just for the record, because it's on the back of the sheet, I'll read it. Conditions are parking, and I know you said it, Counselor, but I just want to read them in order so it makes sure it reflects the record. Parking on street allowed, but only in front of the house and on Longwood Ave. Hours of operation are Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, two to eight. Did you say Tuesdays at all? I was just making sure.
Correct, no, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
One reason I want to read it. By appointment only, no walk-ins, one person at a time, no waiting room, one chair only in use, and no deliveries. Those are the conditions for this.
Yep, thank you. You had it right.
No further discussion. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for this special permit. Let's go in alphabetical order because I didn't poll. Presnahan is here. Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee, yes? McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
With your vote, you've approved the special permit for 45 Longwood. Next is six B. Committee on DGNR was referred, a special permit application for 123 Homestead Ave, which is a yoga class business.
So, the motion is to receive, adopt, the committee report, and grant a special permit with the listed conditions?
Second.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and grant it. Under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, so this is another really nice, nice business. This is at Homestead, a Humison slope. And, and the applicant has a ancillary building on the footprint of their property in which she will run a yoga studio. There is only off-street parking. Nice thing is they have a very expansive driveway to accommodate, they said between 10 and 15 cars. And, so the conditions that we were, and as in the last one, we opened, of course, we opened up the public hearing to the public, and in this one, we had several persons speak in favor of it, which was nice to hear. Nevertheless, we talked it out with, with the applicant and her spouse, and we came up with, and with the input of all the committee and the award five counselors as well, and we, we came up what we felt were reasonable conditions, which is off-street parking only. I don't, oh, I do have, there it is, okay. I had the hours of, so the business is going to take place in the ancillary building only, off-street parking only, no signs. The hours of operation, we had, I hope I wrote it out properly, Mr. President, so I'll just double check my work, but we had Monday through Thursday and Saturday from 10:00 AM to noon. And then we had Monday through Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
Correct.
Okay, and that was a four to one vote. The one dissent that didn't want to have any, the dissenters' argument was, you know, why put, why put any restrictions on hours? And, and the committee felt, I mean, again, this is, the districts, districts are one. I mean, there's got to be some kind of reasonable restriction, besides the applicant herself has another job, felt that these hours were going to work for, for her business, and again, we said if things change and you want to come in and amend your permit, then we'll be happy to entertain that.
Okay, so conditions. Off-street parking only, hours of operation, Monday to Thursday, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Saturday, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Monday to Thursday, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Classes to occur only in the ancillary building on property, not in the house. No sign. Those are the conditions. Counselor McGivern.
Mr. President, I'd just like to speak in favor of the special permit. I know both the property owners, one who was a yoga instructor and the, I'm familiar with the property. It's a unique piece of property. As Counselor Bartley described, it will more than accommodate this type of use, and I'm very confident that the owners will abide by the permit and the conditions themselves.
And, yeah, Counselor Tallman?
Yeah, being a member of the committee and listening to the applicants, I'm very, I feel very comfortable about their state and their case, and also I had some neighbors and people that had used the yoga that really were supportive of them in this, in this venture, so I very much support this also.
Anyone else? Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. I was able to attend this meeting, and as Counselor Bartley said, it's in a unique situation, so it is a good fit, and even though it's on a busy road. Thanks.
There's no further discussion. The clerk called a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to grant the special permit. Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
McGee, yes? McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
With your vote, you approve the order. Nine C, the Committee on DGNR, who was referred an order in accordance to master of the law, chapter 30B, and the Hoya Code ordinances, the city council declare the parcel at 55 Hamilton Street surplus.
It's a motion to receive and adopt the committee report and to declare the four said property a surplus property available for disposition.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and declare a surplus. Under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, two meetings ago, Mr. President, we had Marcos in, and I really want to thank Marcos and his staff for, for putting together a really great presentation. And we had the, we had the overhead set up. Ryan helped them out. It was, it was nice because we had, this is all in black and white, but it's really helpful when you have the, when you can see the lot, when you can see a colored photograph of the locusts. It just, it just makes it that much more digestible. In this case... In this case, 55 Hamilton is on the corner of Roberto Clemente and Hamilton Street. It's a vacant parcel. It was taken in tax title in 1991, and there it sat. And I asked Marcos during the presentation, are there any interested parties? And he said, yes, there possibly could be, especially some of Butters. And it's a really small parcel, Mr. President. It doesn't look like much, but in this case, it might lead to some useful off-street parking for one, or two, or three of the Butters that Marcos referenced. So the committee felt as, I think we felt almost exclude, I mean, I can only think of one parcel where we haven't done this. We felt it was great to put it back into the hands of the Volped, and so they can take the time to RFP the property and hopefully get it back on the tax rolls, since it's been off the tax rolls for almost going on 30 years. And with that, I see in the report. Thank you.
Anyone else under discussion? No further discussion. The clerk called, roll if you vote yes, you're voting for 55 Hamilton. Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LaVon Martinez?
Yes.
McGee, yes. McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
With your vote, you approve the request. 6D, Committee on DGR, who was referred in order.
Well, Mr. President, can we suspend and take 6D and E as a package, please?
Motion is to suspend the rules, take D and E as a package. All those in favor, all opposed. 6D is the vote to approve the MOU between the City of Hoyok and the Hoyok Housing Authority for the parcel listed. 6E is, in accordance with Master of Law, the City Council's vote to approve the order of taking, or deed in lieu of taking, in accordance with the purchase and sale between the City of Hoyok and the Roman Catholic Bishop of Springfield with regards to 71 Maple Street. So motion, let's take up, they're up on debate.
The motion is to take, the committee didn't have a recommendation on this, so my motion is just to receive the committee report, and we can make another motion.
So it was referred, both were referred out of committee, sent to the council without, with no recommendation. That was with both.
Mr. President, a point of clarification?
Counselor McGivern.
These are two separate orders that we received separately, and there's been some discussion at the committee level on one vote, or one combination, or both have to pass. Can we clarify that?
Motion would be to suspend the rules to allow Legal Department to come up and address the Counselor's question. Second. Alls in favor? Alls opposed? Legal?
So are you looking to see if the MOU needs to be voted separately from the acquisition? Is that your question?
The question crystal is, can we vote it separately? Because I'm not voting for both together.
Yeah, I really just took them up together for efficiency purposes.
That's why I'm asking for clarification before we even get into discussion.
For us, because there's no motion yet, I'll clarify on our side, and we'll wait for Legal. D and E were taken up as a package to discuss. We can always, as we know, step back and vote on each independently, so you can say, since there was no recommendation, 6D, motion to pass, whatever you want to do, and then take up 6E. You have that right. So if there's any other discussion, Counselor McGivern?
So these, they're intertwined. So you could vote them separately, but if we don't get the same vote both ways, then it doesn't make any sense. So.
Can you elaborate on that, though? Because the diocese, you know, I've spoken to, is telling me different.
Joe? Counselor McGivern, Section 4. This transaction is contingent upon the sale of Monte del Rosa Church property to the City of Hoyok and approval of said transaction by the City Council for said City of Hoyok. If said sale does not occur, then the MOU is null and void, and HHA is under no obligation to purchase these two vacant parcels from the Roman Catholic Bishop of Springfield.
I believe you're citing the document which we've formally received the first time this evening. It was given to us last Monday at the DGR committee meeting, with a draft at the prior GGR committee meeting.
Okay.
Hey, if I can ask another question while the Law Department is researching their answer. I had a number of questions, Mr. President, at the committee level, two of which I'm waiting answers on. I believe it's coming from Economic Development and Planning, and perhaps from the superintendent of DPW. One is, you know, within the discussion, it was noted there's $150,000 dollars of immediate short-term maintenance repairs that need to be made. I asked for an itemized list of the 150,000. And two is, I asked, although I understand there's a good chance that there'll be a third party that will be entering into an agreement to run the, run a program in the facility, I was asking for a look at an operating budget long-term, you know, what would be the daily operation budget, but more important, what long-term maintenance or renovations or repairs have to be made to the building itself. And I have not received the answers. I'm not sure if the chairperson received them, or if anybody else received them.
I have not.
And that's two weeks, two meetings now. This is the third time I've asked these questions.
Counselor Tallman?
Yes, I also have a question on this issue with the Housing Authority. We had the memorandum of understanding that's signed by the Chair of the Housing Authority, and they stated that night that the board would still have to sign off on that and vote for that, and we haven't heard back from that.
They're actually meeting right now. I'm not sure if this is under agenda, but their meeting is with 6 o'clock tonight.
Okay. They did state that they would have to have that signed before we could do anything with the Housing Authority, before they would have to sign it through their board, so approve on the board, and we haven't seen that yet, so.
Okay. Well, right now, under discussion, is 6D and E, is there a motion, or would you like to give?
So, I mean, it's, Mr. President, it's just like you said, the MOU links it to the purchase and sale. The purchase and sale contemplates a future transaction between seller and the Hoyok Housing Authority, so they're intertwined documents, so you can't really have one without the other.
Correct. There be a motion?
Well, I move just to receive the committee report for now, and so I'm ready to give it if the body wants to.
Okay, so, under discussion, sorry, Counselor, but I know it was, there was no recommendation, so, under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
So I'm just going to, I'm going to give the committee report, and I'm going to reserve my, anything else, if I can, Mr. President. And I'm sorry if I'm a little disorganized here, but this is the position in which we were put, so I didn't really have time to prepare a committee report, you know, sitting down and looking at it. So the committee met on two occasions, on the 18th and the 25th, and we were asked, we were asked to review a property acquisition agreement between the Bishop of Springfield and the City of Hoyok relative to 71 Maple, which is Monte del Rosa, as well as an MOU between the Hoyok Housing Authority and the City of Hoyok regarding certain parcels that were basically consisted of perpetual help church. The, you already heard that one is contingent upon the other. I think you already heard reference from Peter relative to a question I asked, legal counsel, for the Housing Authority as to whether the person signing off on the MOU had legal authority to do so. And I, we, so that's, and apparently, apparently they're voting on it tonight, so that tells me that the chairperson of the Hoyok Housing Authority, when the chairperson signed the MOU, likely did not have legal authority from the HHA board at the time the chairperson signed this MOU. Now, that may be true that as of 6:40 on this date, that that authority is, but, you know, you can't, you know, you can't do it after the fact, but that's nevertheless what we have in front of us. So this property acquisition agreement, Mr. President, calls for a payment of $50,000 to the diocese, and in exchange for the bricks. There really are several restrictions that were, and things that were, you know, limited use, limited use and scope that were delineated within the contract. Not included, as I think all of us in this little half-circle know, not included is the parking, and many religious artifacts, especially that relative to Polish history. It's basically the former church and looks like a rectory building. We do have a appraisal that shows that the $50,000 fits within the appraised value of these buildings. I can tell you that we do not have, at least I do not have, an appraisal relative to the parcel on the former perpetual help. So I don't know where the number 140 came up with, because it's not based on any appraisal that's before me. The purchase and sale contract also should be noted for what it, what it changes, and in this case, the diocese, as we heard on the 18th, the diocese is a tax-paying entity to the City of Hoyok. We also heard on the 18th, Mr. President, as you know, that, you know, there's good news and bad news with that. The bad news is that the diocese is going to have a significant portion of their taxes abated, in other words, returned, through what we have, what the City of Hoyok calls and state law calls an overlay account. So the assessor advises on that. I don't know if we got an exact number. It sounded like it was in the $250,000 range. We also heard from the chief assessor that the diocese paid, there's a certain sum that they paid in that will not be abated. The assessor rounded it off to about $100,000. I don't think it was exactly that number. I think it was slightly south of that, but, so there are tax monies that will no longer be realized, because there's certainly a taxpayer right now. A couple, another thing that we pointed out, or we didn't get into, there's a court case that's being a stipulation of dismissal as well. We didn't really discuss that much, but that's in the document as well. The deed is, you know, it's a, it's a quick claim deed, and it says what it says. I mean, it's got, it's got a couple of things I just, I guess I'll just point out. This purchase and sale contract lists a lot of things that are of limited scope. The deed itself says, the grantor, which is in this case is a bishop, grantor shall retain ownership of the stained glass windows, wall paintings, murals, decorative lights and lamps. There have been numerous things removed from the former Monte del Rosa over the course of the last months and years. So whatever happened to those, I don't know. The seller, the seller did list some things that would stay. For example, a kitchen stove and hood, cabinetry, sound system, a bell in the steeple, an organ, and exterior message sign. There are numerous things which the seller may remove and/or retain ownership, which are pews, lecterns, statues of cross, baptism font, candle stands, Polish eagle emblem. The Polish eagle emblem gets that right out the door. The altars, you can understand that, cross, two birdbaths, two birdbaths located on the premises. So I, I mean, we could go on. I'm going to hold off on my comments on this deal, because I just wanted to give the, oh, let me just say, through the committee report, we, really, everybody on the committee pitched in, we had several counselors that were here, really pitching in with some great questions, and I greatly appreciate their input, because frankly, it was vital to sort of pull out all the information. We were, I mean, we found out about this, I think, early June, and at that point, it looked like there was a due date to June 30th. As I noted on the 18th in committee, the document itself, the purchase and sale contract, wasn't signed until the 18th. So this body needs to, that's why we're here in a special session, Mr. President, this body needs to make a decision by July 18th. And we also heard, we also suspended our rules, as we always do, Mr. President, and allowed the public to address us, and we really did hear some really great impassioned comments for the proponents of MD, and I frankly want to thank, I'm only going to name one name, which is Olivia Mazel. Olivia's been very passionate about this for years, and especially with the historic district, and her work should not go unnoticed. And, but there were several other people, and certainly they were either Polish descent, or they were former parishioners, and I think they reflected a larger body of people that were here. I also want to thank, I said, I also want to thank Father Albert, because Father Albert was here both meetings, and, you know, paying full attention, and really staying on point and on that, because as you know, Mr. President, Father is the pastor of Our Lady the Cross, which is yoked with the former MD Church, but Our Lady the Cross also manages the MD Catholic School, our grade school. So I really want to recognize Father Albert's, you know, staying here the whole time, and, you know, taking notes and really watching the process, so. So with that, with that, Mr. President, I think I pretty much hit the highlights. I'm just going to reserve my comments after others have had a chance to weigh in. Thank you.
Anyone else under discussion? Counselor Sullivan?
Thanks. The first I like to address is, everybody keeps alluding to a potential or possible operator, and the Monte del Rosa Preservation Society has made it clear to everybody that they're willing to step in. They've already received a letter of credit, a letter of commitment from a foreign savings bank for $150,000. They've also raised other monies. So there's no question, I don't know, I want to be clear, that there is in the public, there's somebody ready to step forward in a minute's notice. So that's pretty much a done deal. I hear a lot of comparisons to the Essex House. There is no comparison. The Essex House, the roof was caving in, water was running through it, the building was running, loaded with asbestos, and that was a mistake. And because we made a mistake once, we shouldn't be turning a blind eye to every opportunity that comes in and be afraid to take any risk at all. It's not a fair comparison. The price estimates that I've, that the city has solicited, it's nice that they've done this, but I'd like to remind everybody that these estimates, any estimate that the city gets is done at prevailing wage. So anywhere where you see an estimate, you can cut that in half, and then cut that in half again by the amount of labor, volunteer labor, this group, the Preservation Society, as carpenters, plumbers, electricians, that would also greatly reduce the cost. So where you might see $150,000 or $200,000, in reality, you're looking at a $50,000. The Essex House, the roof was caving in, water was running through it, the building was running, loaded with asbestos. And that was a mistake. And because we made a mistake once, we shouldn't be turning a blind eye to every opportunity that comes in and be afraid to take any risk at all. It's not a fair comparison. The price estimates that I've, that the city has solicited, it's nice that they've done this, but I'd like to remind everybody that these estimates, any estimate that the city gets is done at prevailing wage. So anywhere where you see an estimate, you can cut that in half. And then cut that in half again by the amount of labor, volunteer labor, this group, the Preservation Society, as carpenters, plumbers, electricians, that would also greatly reduce the cost. So where you might see $150,000 or $200,000, in reality, you're looking at a $50,000 project. That being said, the last thing I'd like to have everybody consider is the fact that even though these are intertwined subjects, they're intertwined. The memorandum of understanding with the Holyoke Housing Authority, yeah, it's contingent upon the sale. You can approve the memorandum, as I see it, you could approve the memorandum and then have a problem with the sale and force them back into negotiating on the sale price if they want to consummate and finish the deal.
Just a quick question of the chair, if I could. Dave, you mentioned something about a court case. Could you, I don't need the whole story, but what is that? What were you referring to?
There, you know, we, Mr. President? Okay. So the building commissioner denied a demo permit and the diocese sued before, I forgot the name of the board in Boston.
It was the Massachusetts Building Code Appeals Board.
Building Code Appeals Board, okay. So I think the city counterclaimed, I don't have any of the litigation, it was never presented to us. The only thing presented was an attachment to the, to the purchase and sale as an exhibit. And it said that should this pass, that the parties would sign the attachment, which is a stipulation of dismissal. So they both give up.
One else? One else, Counselor?
I mean, I'm just going to just give you my two cents on this. I just want to point out a couple, I didn't really give a, the contingency, and I want to, I want to respond to Mike in a second, but I, I'll have to, yeah. So let me just make a section for this transaction, and this is in the MOU, is contingent upon the sale of MD to the city of Holyoke and approval of said transaction. If said sale does not occur, then this MOU is null and void and HHA is under no obligation to purchase the two parts from the bishop. So that's pretty well cut and dried in the MOU. I just want to just add my two cents, Mr. President. I was on the losing side for the Historic Preservation District, which by the way, I keep, it was not even a close vote. It was eight to seven, but I was in the seven and he needed 10. So it wasn't even a close vote. But I was really passionate about it to try to save the building. I still am passionate about the saving the building, Mr. President. It's an icon of Holyoke. Every person, no person can deny that. And then there's a letter that we can't even, we did, it was dated June 7th from the Council General for Poland out of New York City. I mean, we didn't officially receive it. We can't, I just want to recognize he sent it. I, you know, I won't read it or anything, but what a letter. And then I took the other step of going on their website and, I mean, this guy's, I mean, incredible resume. This is a, these are really accomplished people and they're saying, yes, thank you, Mayor, for saving this building. And I want to come up and I want to be part of this. And so you read a letter like that and you just, you want to get behind it. Mr. President, I cannot vote for this. I cannot vote for this deal at all. This is a terrible, terrible deal for the city of Holyoke. Despite what I said about my passion for MD, how I went to Mass on a regular basis, though I am a BS parishioner, but I went to Mass regularly. And it's just a wonderful, a wonderful organist, wonderful singer, a wonderful priest, and that meant a lot to me and did a lot for me as well. But the deal is a loser for the city of Holyoke. Now, I know that contingency thing is vital because as Marcos pointed out, that's where, that's our master plan. It talks about having housing that or a public school. Well, we've got a chance to have two public schools in Holyoke. One of them might be the former Peck Junior, but the other one will be right there. I mean, what a perfect place for a school with a gorgeous Jackson Parkway and how that's come around and all the other building places for people to walk, Mr. President. Great place for a school. Want the school, want that, but we don't have appraisal. Where'd they get the 140? Could have said eight billion, could have said $3. I don't know, we don't have an appraisal. But this deal with, and I'm just going to go, I got to finish, Mr. President. I appreciate your temperance. From the diocese of Springfield, I was very polite in committee. They are tough negotiators, but it's more than that, Mr. President. This contract is, I mean, I've done scores and scores and scores of these contracts over my legal career, scores of them. This is the most one-sided, hard-nosed, vicious contract I have ever read in my legal career. It is unreal what they do, what they're stripping down from the Madre de Rosa Church. They already took the cross off the steeple. But what the diocese is doing is just stripping it bare other than the four walls, Mr. President. It's incredible. It's, I mean, they are just hard-nosed negotiators. But as I said in my report, not only do we have to pay them the $50,000, but they're no longer paying taxes over there. Are they even paying taxes over here, Mr. President? That's an open question. I didn't ask it. I neglected to ask, but you know, you can't think of everything. It wasn't offered. Now, I want to be clear, I'm not knocking anyone in this, in City Hall. It's an A for effort. We had to do our best. We did what we could. I think we did what we could. I'm imploring them to go back to the law firm with whom they dealt. I don't, I'm not even going to say their name, I'm so disgusted by them. Go back to 33 Elliott Street. Say to them, do something better. Second of all, if you're going to come up with, and I, Mike Sullivan, I've known since I was a kid, I believe him. What Mike says is always the truth. Never say, he doesn't misspeak ever. But, Mr. President, we don't rely in law, and would even, I almost said their name, would the law firm, would they rely on a promise, an oral promise in a real estate deal? You bet your life they would never do it. They would never do it. Why would the city of Holyoke put his neck out there on a, despite how much I trust Counselor Sullivan, how much I trust the advocates for this on both sides, either friends or the MD Society, I do trust them. But that's not the point. The point is, we're fiduciaries of the city of Holyoke. We're stewards of this body. I said that we're stewards of the city. We're supposed to be looking out for it. I cannot in good conscience rely on a promise that, yes, we have a letter of credit from a bank. How many times have I done deals where banks turn it off at the last second? Nah, no thanks. Well, that's it. It's all over at that point. There's no, there's no emotion when it comes to a bank. They don't, they don't care. They care about money and getting their money back with interest. That's all bank cares about. You know, you can make promises till you're blue in the face about, but it doesn't mean anything. Go back to the diocese, go back to the third parties, put it on paper that if we could have the city of Holyoke be this quote unquote straw person and we convey it back out even to a nonprofit, that's legitimate law. That's, I do them all the time. That's contract law, Mr. President. You can absolutely do that. Takes a little bit of thinking and it takes the diocese to step back from their vindictiveness. So I would ask this body, I mean, listen, I'm one vote and, you know, I could kill the one vote because we're only nine here, but I think, I don't think I'm the only no vote, but I'm positive I'm one of nine people here that really supports Madre de Rosa and wants that building to go on. Like I said, I really appreciate everything everyone's done and I'm sorry I have to vote the way I have to vote. I really am, Mr. President, but this is not a winner for the city.
Thank you, Counselor McGee, or President McGee. I just want to say, I want to go on record that I am Catholic. I'm a proud parishioner of St. Jerome's because last time I spoke about this, somebody filed an ethics complaint against quite a few of us because they said that we never announced it. But looking back in the tapes, I did. I also said that I'm also a proud father of two alumni from Madre de Rosa and one currently enrolled there. Fantastic school, fantastic church, fantastic people. I do want to applaud, so the mayor saw a problem or a need and he did what he thought was right and I applaud him. He went and negotiated with the bishop and I really do think he did a great job by doing so. I'm sure you're getting tons of pressure from not only Hoyokers, but people from other communities as well to try to negotiate and spark a deal. So I do want to give the mayor props. Bundling it, I think, is handcuffing it. I don't think that's a wise decision. I don't think that's a good decision and I'm certainly not in favor of doing that. So the church is what, 117 years old? It needs to be saved. It'd be a travesty, it'd be, I think, a sin if that building was demolished. I think it would be an absolute sin for anybody that took part in demolishing that because I think of it as a living body. I'm a proud son of an immigrant who immigrated here from Ireland. And we, just the other day, had a wonderful tour put on by Kate Sullivan and the Gaston Electric to the fish lift. And it meant a lot to me because as I was getting the tour, I was also realizing and seeing the work that my father had done when he was with O'Connell Construction, building that fish lift. And it was really good to hear when the person giving us the tour was saying that this fish lift is remarkable in significant ways. The fact it was overdesigned, this fish lift will never crumble. And what reminds me of overdesign is my research I did in Madre de Rosa Church and the steeple. In fact, that steeple is overdesigned by the hardworking men and women of the Polish ancestry that came and built that church with their hands and brick by brick and by, you know, it's just, it's remarkable what a group of proud Polish, Polish Americans and Hoyokers accomplished. So the building needs to be saved. So the question is, who's going to save it? Is it the city's best interest to save the church or is it a private group? Well, I met with, and if he's here in the audience, he can help me with his last name because it's a hard one for me, John Fedenkewicz.
State slow.
Yes. So I met with him and had a fantastic opportunity to go through his notes. Let me tell you what due diligence this group did. I was, I thought it was going to be a 10-minute meeting. In fact, I did it in behalf of my colleague and my friend, Michael Sullivan. He asked me to just sit down with him and I literally thought it was going to be a 10-minute meeting. I think it was over two hours and I could have stayed another hour with him. He was just absolutely, just the amount of information. And the funny thing is, he says he doesn't like speaking to people. He's a boiler operator. He doesn't like going out and doing this. And I'm like, wow, this guy is fantastic. So the reason I bring this up is him and that group, they should be the owners. And they should be the owners of not a $50,000, what the city is expected to pay. It should be the owners for a dollar. The diocese was doing the right thing. They'd be turning it over to that group for a dollar. We saw on the news today that the Springfield, I'm sorry, the West Springfield Irish Cultural Center just got a $100,000 grant to help in rebuilding different things. There's grant money out there. Now, should the city purchase it and convey it over to this group? I don't think so. I don't think we need to be a party in this. I think the diocese should be working with this group and they should sell it over for a dollar and that's it. That's my personal view. I'm only one of 13, or one of nine tonight. If we look back in the history, why did the diocese close this beautiful church? They said two reasons. One, they said it was losing parishioners. Well, I attended Mass there, my kids went to Mass there, school there, as I said. Every time that I had the chance where I wasn't at St. Jerome's to go down there, it was really busy and it was really hard to find a parking spot. And the second thing was public safety, the steeple stability. I mentioned before and how it was over-engineered. I don't think that's going to fall. In fact, the way it was brought to my attention that it was in dire need, it was going to fall. They had to put up all this fencing around it because bricks were falling off. Well, I'm not sure if that happened. And quite frankly, and I hate to say this because I feel like I'll get hit by a lightning bolt, but the diocese engineers, well, I don't trust them. I don't trust them. I don't trust them now. I didn't trust them when they, I'm not even sure if it's the same group, but when they said Holyoke Catholic wasn't safe, look out the window, Holyoke Catholic is prettier now than ever. Holyoke Catholic is damn safe. And I just don't trust this engineer firm and I'm not trusting the information that we're receiving. It does feel to me that we're getting pushed this, we're getting a lot of pressure to bundle it. One article that I read, the diocese also said it was closing because the cost was well over north of, I think, a million dollars. Tonight, last minute during the meeting, I get a letter from the city saying the estimate, if we take it over, is $183,000. Now, should I trust the people who I don't trust or should I trust the city's numbers? I'm tending to believe on the city's side, okay, because we have some really good people here. However, that's still $183,000 that I don't think we should be spending out of taxpayers' money. We have so many different, difficult needs, so many other things that we need to be solving. I'm not voting in favor of this tonight and I encourage my colleagues not to as well. Thank you.
Through the chair to address Counselor Leahy's concerns. Once again, I got to remind everybody, the city will not be spending $183,000. These are prevailing wage estimates, number one. Cut that in half. The volunteer health, cut it in half again. And it's not the city that's going to be spending this money, it's the Madre de Rosa Preservation Society. City won't be spending a dime on this stuff. So we continue with a little bit of a misconception there. And once again, I implore everybody, the two, Counselor Bartley, I'm thinking through the chair, I agree with what he said 1,000%. This is a lousy, lousy purchase and sale agreement. I'd love to see the thing, when somebody's so petty and vindictive as to take the Polish eagle, that has nothing to do with the church and strip the birdbaths out of the yard and, you know, not making it a parking transferable. There's some real, real, real flaws in that agreement. Approve the memorandum of understanding. Yes, granted it says contingent upon the purchase and sale. We've approved it, but we haven't approved the purchase and sale. Go back and negotiate the purchase and sale and then you've got it and we've got the property to build the new school.
Mr. President, I'm going to be brief. I'm not going to pretend to be an engineer and talk about structural integrity. I'm not going to pretend to be a lawyer and talk about contracts. I'm a city counselor and, you know, I'm going to talk about sidewalks, I'm going to talk about streetlights that don't work, I'm going to talk about a taxpaying entity not paying us taxes anymore. Those are the issues that I'm getting calls about. You know, there's a sidewalk list that doesn't exist. I mean, I get the same calls from the same residents every year about sidewalks. They want, they want to stop tripping in front of their house and $50,000 could probably help some of them sidewalks. The estimate for 183, let's cut it in half, $90,000. The key word on this is an estimate of short-term repairs. I don't know what the long-term repairs are going to look like. As far as the contract goes, some of the things that concern me is that the seller shall retain ownership of all stained glass windows, wall paintings, murals, decorative lighting and lamps. The whole time they're in the church, we have to maintain them. We have trouble fixing our stained glass windows because we don't have the money to do that. You know, everything that they're taking out of the church is everything about MD. I'm also not going to pretend to know the church's thoughts on why they're doing this. You know, as Catholics or those of us that claim to be Catholics, you know, when the Vatican speaks, they speak infallible about church matters. That was their decision for MD. I'm not going to question their decision. I'm not, I'm not in the Vatican, I'm not in the inner workings of the church. But again, when the Pope and the Vatican speak, they're infallible on church matters. This is a church matter. I also had conversations with the MD Preservation Group, very classy group of folks, great people. Information I asked for was sent to me without hesitation. They were much more easy to work with than I think the other organization who was almost, which is a little bit too aggressive on this matter. And it was passionate, I get it, I'm a passionate person. It's just, you know, there's a fence around the building now. We're not sure, it could be to keep people out. I mean, there was, there was questions about the structural integrity of the building then. Again, I'm not going to try to get into that. You know, the Our Lady of the Cross has to allow them to use the parking lot. Again, I don't see a lot of contracts, but this contract is just not something that is in the goodness for the city of Hoyoke. We need taxes, we need streetlights. Right up from MD, there's a big metal plate that the current construction put there because there's a big hole in the road. That $50,000 might be able to fix that hole in the road. So when you drive by MD Church, you're not piling through a big hole in the road. I mean, I just think- I mean, I just think we have to prioritize what the city of Hoyok needs. If they can wait a year, maybe we can use the CPA money that the taxpayers of the Hoyok, the property owners or business owners have been paying into, although the majority of them didn't want that. So, you know, it's just, the timing's not right. We need too much work, we need too much infrastructure within the city of Hoyok, and we should not be getting in the middle of buying properties, because where does it stop now? There's many, there's quite a few churches falling down in the city of Hoyok. Are we gonna get into the church-buying business? Just don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was a past supporter of the historic district, and I've worked closely with a number of the people who spent a year in vigil in the church, and I had a conversation with one of those individuals today before the meeting. Because I read very carefully this purchase and sale agreement, and I have to say, I agree with my colleagues that it's all liability for the city. And as a donor toward repairing our own stained glass windows in the city hall, I know how much each repair of each window costs, and it's thousands of dollars. My additional concern is that the diocese has been a negligent landlord for the last seven-plus years. We have no idea what the condition of those windows are, but if we sign this agreement, we are accepting all liability as a city, regardless of the operator, for the maintenance and repair. That could be tens of thousands of dollars, we just don't know. In addition to that, we had a staff member from the mayor's office come in and say, well, one of the boilers works and is hooked up to fuel, the other two look pretty good. I mean, there's just so many unknown expenses and liabilities. Whenever I hear that a party wants to sell to another party because they have the deepest pockets, that makes me very nervous. And we all know that as we just struggled through the budget, from which we did not cut enough for it to have a chance of being balanced, probably when the free cash comes in, that we may have money in our stabilization fund, but we're far from having deep pockets. So, as a representative of the ward, and thereby having a vote for the entire city, I feel an obligation to look out for the entirety. And I just feel in this circumstance, the liabilities outweigh the potential benefits. It is my hope that the representatives of the diocese would keep their word that they said at the mic that they wanted to sell the building. This purchase and sale agreement basically locks the city into permanent ownership of the building. It's so tied up, so tight. I mean, we had the discussion, well, you can have a building and it doesn't have parking, isn't that why we just voted to let Lynch School be cut down, torn down? For that same exact reason. And so, I just don't think we can have it always, and it's with regret that I say this, because I know the heart of the people that sat vigil in the church, and I understand their feelings, and that's why I tried to support them in the way that we, I felt we could responsibly as a city. But this is just a bridge too far, and I can't support it. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe that I heard David mentioning, Councilor Bartley, that there's a decision that has to be made by July nineteenth? In regards to the memorandum, or the being able to purchase? My question is, are we able to go back and renegotiate any other way, or what happens the nineteenth? I didn't get that part. Thank you.
Well, I can't ask, answer the second question, but I hope they can renegotiate. But Gladys, or Councilor Bartley, the contract was signed June eighteenth, and the contract that said, the contract must be approved by, within thirty days. So, that would be July eighteenth. So, I suppose, we could, if we take a vote now, we'll vote the way you vote. The other thing we could do is just let it lapse, and if it went past July eighteenth, the contract would die, as well as the MOU. And both are kind of hand in glove, they're hand in hand, so they have to, you have to vote for, if you vote for, if you already approve the MOU, you have to approve MD Church.
Councilor Sullivan wants to speak for a third time. Motion to allow him to speak.
Almost.
Second. I'll oppose.
You make it a fourth time, too?
You can do it as much as you want.
I'm gonna have some questions for him.
Motion is to keep it open for discussion or question and answer.
I'd say, once again, even though it says the MOU, it's contingent upon the contract. If we approve the MOU, we reject the contract, it's up to the dioceses to come back with a contract that would be acceptable to plug back into that MOU. Send the contract back, let the dioceses try to explain to the parishioners of Our Lady of the Cross and to the rest of the Western Mass community why it makes sense not to accept a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but to go ahead and spend a half a million dollars, have a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar delta. Why that makes sense, because they wanna keep some bird baths, they wanna play, as Councilor Bartley said, hard-nosed bargaining through this law firm in Springfield. And then if that's the case, and that's the case, then that's what happens. They can explain it, that getting two hundred thousand dollars, it's a better idea to spend a half a million.
Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just now, as that, one of my questions has been answered by Mr. Marrero, who I don't think can calculate prevailing wages, so I'm assuming that these are the true costs of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's now a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. I still am waiting to hear for the operating budget, whoever is gonna pay for the operating budget, what the operating budget is. This is, the issues, what we have before us is, we have an MOU that ties the church, which, you know, quite frankly, you know, I think it's a church that, in a part of our history, it needs to be saved. And I don't have a problem with the city intervening and helping out, and the city has done this in the past, and that, to me, is not the issue. The issue is, in the past, when the city has done these type of projects and saved something, and they've been in close partnership with someone who has a plan, who has a budget, who has an acknowledgement, who is signed on the dotted line, that they're gonna assume some of the cost. We don't have that in front of us. First time tonight, after three weeks of discussion, I hear it's the Preservation Society, which I think would be a wonderful fit, understanding a little bit about them for the building, for the property, and for an historical district, and being able to do the things that they intend to do. Can they generate the money that is necessary to keep the building open? Where's the answer for that? My question goes, going back to this being bonded together with the property the city is looking at for our perpetual help, which would be the agreement with the Housing Authority, the city, and the dioceses, is that's a five-year extension in this MOU, and it could fall apart any time during that five years. So, if that falls apart, does that mean MD goes back to the dioceses with the land for Our Lady of Perpetual Health? It's tied together. And we're gonna spend a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars on MD, and then we don't make our perpetual help land work, and Housing Authority doesn't take it, the city doesn't get the money to pay the hundred and forty-three, the hundred and forty thousand dollars within five years? Everything goes back to the dioceses. Now, the diocese has a building that's been invested in with taxpayers' dollars. These are the questions I've been asking, and the answers aren't coming forward, because this plan, and I agree with David, this plan is not ready. We were not part of, and we never are part of negotiating, but we're not part of, you know, what can we do? What are you interested in? How do we make this work? It doesn't work the way it's written. It's not there financially, there's too many questions, it's not there, we're the third party, because there is no third party in any language that we have in front of us, other than, and I respect the word of Councilor Sullivan, and I respect the Preservation Society, but there's nothing here. I'm willing to keep an open mind and to lay this on the table and continue to let the parties that be continue to discussions and continue to fine-tune the plan, but if it calls for a vote tonight, I have to vote for the taxpayers. It's an insult to the taxpayers to use the money without a plan, to how to keep this going in just the near future, never mind the long term.
Anyone else? Councilor Tomlin.
Yeah, I'll just be brief. Everybody said pretty much the way I felt about this contract, and how, the other night at the DGR meeting, I had a lot of questions and was concerned about bundling together, and, you know, the cost of this down the road, we've got some cost, and they may be a little bit high, but it's still a cost. I mean, the average person, fifty thousand is not a lot of money, but when you add in all the future cost of this buyout of the church, I just don't feel right with it. And I am a member of Our Lady of the Cross Church, I'm a Catholic, I've been a member of that church for, was formerly Holy Cross, for sixty years. And, you know, nobody wants to see a church go down and not be saved. Madre de la Rosa is a beautiful church, and I've been there several times before it closed. But this is just, the word I have to say is incomplete, there's not enough answers that I would feel comfortable in voting for this tonight. So, if it goes on for discussion, I'll vote for that, but as of now, I cannot rightfully feel comfortable, and thinking of the taxpayers and the several people that have called me and texted me and talked to me personally, that said that the city should be in no business of buying a church, and so I will be voting for no for this tonight.
Anyone else? Councilor Sullivan.
Might as well keep trying to get the last word in. One thing, when you think about it, you get the place for fifty thousand dollars, and let's say, nobody did step up, that the Madre de la Rosa Preservation Society was a figment of my imagination. There's a church up in the Highlands that was converted into a house. There's a historic church in Hadley, right on Route Nine, that's the headquarters for V1 vodka. Does anybody in this room really think that we wouldn't be able to turn around and sell that church tomorrow? That somebody wouldn't step forward and buy it cheap? Fifty thousand's cheap. That's it.
Councilor McGivern.
He's gonna get the last word.
Not the last word, Michael, but with all due respect, I asked about the parking, because the future sale of the possibility of selling the church and the property in the future, if the plans don't work out, would be at least an argument to say, we have something to hang our hat on. We can get the fifty thousand dollars back and maybe get the investment money back. No one's buying that church, because, I don't care what the planning department tells you, the planning commission is not gonna vote to allow V1 vodka to operate in that church without off-street parking. V1 vodka is the most expensive vodka on the shelf these days, and you know that, because you drink vodka. I would love the option, that as an option, as a backup. I would love to see Preservation Society take over and be successful, and the city have little other than being a silent landlord, you know, to the keeping of this historical building. But this document, the deed, doesn't allow for that. It gives us no safe plan, no backup plan. And the MOU, I don't know what the MOU does, but backs us into a corner, and I'm not pointing fingers at anyone saying that they backed us into a corner, but we are in the corner tonight. It's not right.
Just to answer the question, because I believe it is a question. Quick claim deed, middle paragraph, subjects are restrictions running with the land, providing that in no event shall the premises ever be put to any use that is inconsistent with the teaching of the Roman Catholic Church as determined in the sole discretion of the Roman Catholic Bishop Springfield.
Restriction in the deed.
Well, we could question the bishop to see if he drinks, you know, V1 vodka.
I'm not going there. Councilor Bartley?
I highlighted that, Mr. President, that's in section five of this, again, this really restrictive contract. So, when they say running with the land, that means, you know, forever. So, and that literally means that if we do sell it, that the next owner still is beholden to the Bishop of Springfield, and the next owner, and this is throughout the course of time, until the Bishop of Springfield, in his wisdom, decides to release the restriction. This is for all time, for the rest of history, the rest of recorded history. That restriction, so the bishop, in his sole discretion, makes a sole call, and what is that? For the love of Mike, I would love to see if the bishop had a restriction like that in any other, if his purchase and sale contract. Again, it's the vindictiveness and the viciousness of the ordinary of Springfield and his law firm, vindictive and vicious towards the Polish people. I do not know why, I'm not gonna pretend to know why. The other thing I wanna point out, Mr. President, the MOU, the hundred and forty thousand dollars, where'd that come from? It's a made-up number, completely made-up number. So, it's based on nothing before us. I could've written that number, too. There's no third-party independent appraisal, so no bank is gonna ever loan on that. They don't work that way. So, I mean, I mean, it was a good try. I mean, I know our law department feels terrible about this, because when we had one of the lawyers in, I said it on the microphone, you probably just wanted to bang your head against the wall after walking out of a room with that law firm. They are what they are, but in this case, they're not gonna pull one over on the city of Hoyok with my vote.
Councilor Bacon.
Thank you, and I would just like to point out on the quick claim deed, as it lists the stained glass windows, the wall paintings, the murals, the lights and the lamps, it states they may remove any and all at its sole discretion upon ninety days' notice. In the other part of the document, it says a hundred and twenty days. But in the body of the document, it makes us, the buyer, should we do this, responsible for all the repair and maintenance, there's no stipulation as the condition. This is a huge liability. I can't say it enough, just look up in our city hall, and you know what I mean. And it's just so one-way, and not favorable to the city, or to the people who wanted to continue a good use of the building. Thank you.
All right, so if there's...
Before we take a vote, Mr. President, if I could just make my disclosure.
Counselor.
Thank you. I think you know what's going on. A few of us were turned over to the Ethics Commission when we took an unfavorable vote on the historic district several years ago, and although my conversation with the Ethics Commission was somewhat brief, when I asked them if they were part of the Roman Empire and if persecution of Christians was something that was alive again, and he said, no, Joe, that's not what we're talking about. I said, well, I'm Roman Catholic, I'm a member of Our Lady of Glade Lupe, former Sacred Heart Church, we're maybe, Our Lady of Glade Lupe Parish, because we are four parishes brought together, four, three former parishes of the city of Hoyok, including Our Lady of Perpetual Health. I don't feel I should have to declare that, but because some people call the Ethics Commission, which I have no idea why, anyone from the city of Hoyok would call the Ethics Commission, I just, you know, feel I do have to declare it and join my colleagues, and I'm proud to say I'm Roman Catholic, but voting in here is something that you have to do with your responsibilities as a city councilor.
Councilor A.
Yeah, I too. I'm gonna declare that I'm not a vodka drinker, but a Guinness drinker, but I think that what happens after this, I think the diocese, this is just my personal opinion, one of thirteen, I think they should do the right thing, sit down with the friends of the Polish group, and with John, and do the right thing, and get this transferred over to that group, so they can go on and they can sustain a healthy business. I just got the property agreement in front of me. I know it was talked about last week and whatnot, and not having an opportunity to go through the whole thing, I wouldn't have voted for it to begin with, because I need time to digest this. But as Councilor Bartley had said and mentioned, everything I see in this, from what, just, this is totally one-sided. This is something that I wouldn't have signed to begin with. So, just my final words, just do the right thing. Thank you.
Motion to deny.
Motion is, well, hold on, for clarification. So, we did suspend the rules to take up D and E for discussion purposes, so is there now a motion to deny both, or a motion to...
Motion to deny both.
The motion is to deny D and E, because it's still in the package.
The president asked for separate votes.
Well, first, it was seconded.
I'll rescind my motion, we'll take, the motion to, which one do you want to take up first, Joe?
Sixty is first in line, because it's...
You want to suspend the rules, Joe, and take sixty first?
You want to suspend the rules, Joe, and take six D first?
So it'd be six D.
You know, it doesn't make a difference.
So we're on six D, which is with regards to the MOU. Motion is to deny, was there a second? It was seconded.
Sir President?
Counselor McGivern.
Make a motion to lay it on the table.
Bells for a second.
Second.
We're back. Because after the ruling, you'd have to overrule the ruling.
Make a motion to lay it on the table. Second.
Motion is to lay it on the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed?
No.
Noes have it. Back to the original motion, motion to deny, six D, it was seconded, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote-
Just a point of clarification, and this is why I asked to separate these items, is, are we voting on the MOU if we're voting on this?
We're going down the agenda, which is six D.
I know, the MOU was received under item number one this evening.
Item number one was a communication.
From the attorney.
Letter from the Assistant City Solicitor, host community agreement, which was received. It's a communication, it's a letter. The agreement, that's-
Okay. No, I'm just asking, are we voting on the MOU on six D?
Six D is what is before you, the motion is to deny, it was seconded by Counsel Vacan.
Presnahan.
President, sorry, thank you for the correction. So it's six D right now, Joe.
Is your question, is six D the MOU?
Correct.
That's what I said.
Okay, so I think it's just, it's yes or no, right?
I'll ask the law department, because there's a big difference here. The MOU connects it to the church. And this is what I've been trying to say all along, is they should not be yoked together.
But they are, Joe. They are. I mean, I know-
What the ruling was. Counselor Bartley?
I know down should be up, and up should be down, but you know, that's the way it is.
Counselor Bartley, out of order.
I mean, it's like a human rain delay.
Counsel McGivern's question.
I've been listening very nicely to everybody this evening, I think it's a fair question.
And I read the, I read the section, of which the legal department did say, correct. Now if they want to change that opinion, they can, or if you want to re-ask it and have them say it on the mic again, we can do that as well. Are these two tied together?
Make a motion to bring the law department-
They were already, the motion was already done, they're still open.
Asked and answered.
To the legal department.
Joe, can you just clarify, because I'm looking at the agenda, and I don't have a six D, I have like 1113.
So it's the, it's the letter from the mayor, calling the special meeting, so that's what we're going down, of which, it's not even six, it's two D, of which, the clerk, in order to help us out with tracking everything, made an agenda which has a number six, there's, and lies the confusion.
Six D is the MOU, Joe.
On the motion.
Thank you, Crystal.
All right, so the motion is to deny, it was seconded, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting to deny, if you vote no, you're voting not to deny. Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Labor Martinez?
Yes.
McGee? Yes. McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Tallman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
What your vote, you denied the MOU. Six E or two E, depending on how you want to see it in-
Motion to deny.
Motion is to deny.
Second.
It was seconded. Clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting to deny the taking, so vote to approve the taking, or de-inlutive taking, 71 Maple Street. Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Labor Martinez?
Yes.
McGee? Yes. McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
What your vote, you denied six slash two E. Finance Committee reports, the Committee on Finance was referred-
To President, there is no committee report before us.
I agree, I was gonna make that clear. So, three refers to free cash for land-taking, B is stabilization, both are in committee, of which the rules do not allow for a special meeting to pull from a committee jacket. In order to do that, the committee would have to have a separate meeting to then refer it out of the jacket, that is the rule. Therefore, section three on this letter is improper.
Oh, good ruling. Motion to go to number 12, I guess.
Number four.
All of them before us?
Motions and orders, well, they're technically, you can't take them up.
Is 11 before us?
11?
11 is a new order.
It's new.
So 11 is before us, yes, for the first time.
It's new.
Even though it's the same order that was denied two weeks ago, it is, it is brand-new, resubmitted.
Really? All right.
So 11 is a new, it's a filed order, it hasn't gone to committee, therefore it can be taken up, which that one is, from Counselor McGivern and Vacan, whereas an appropriation of $79,000 from free cash to software licensing, software hardware, which is the phone system, is there a motion?
Make a motion to receive, pass the first reading.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Just, this will be the same committee reports, I'll just do it quickly, because everybody was present the first time we went around with this. This, last year, our phone system for City Hall in the annex crashed, a executive decision was made by the mayor and allowed to use the IT line item, remember in the budget, the IT line item is one, essentially one line item with, you know, with a few, I'm sorry, one budget with a few line items that pertains to the contract with the GNE to perform the IT services, and with the purchasing and ability to do things within the realm of IT. It was considered that the phone system came under this umbrella. I, no one questioned that, well, we did ask why free cash was coming at this point in time, we also had an option for stabilization, that failed, and why it's going into software licensed systems hardware, because that one line item is all-encompassing, when they used the $79,000 to take care of a new phone system, which is up and running, they did not have enough money at the end of the year to pay for the software license and the systems hardware. So essentially, we're paying for the phone system, it's water over the dam, we said it would've been nice if we had an option last year or earlier this fiscal year to see, you know, to pay for this, you know, at that time, or, you know, transfer from stabilization, or transfer from free cash. So this is a bill, these are bills that are now due, I don't know if, the status of them, and what's gonna happen if they're not paid this month, but they are, they are due.
Counsel Vacan.
Our acting auditor, Mr. Bellamy, let me know that at one point, the website was shut down because the bill hadn't been paid. I don't know how they got it back up, but it's our public notice vehicle at this moment.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to do an approach?
Make a motion to have the mayor approach?
All right, so there's now a motion to allow the mayor to speak, is there a second?
What's it gonna?
There's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Mayor.
Thank you, councilors, and thank Counselor McGivern and Vacan for filing the order for this. As Counselor McGivern explained, the City Hall, annex, and some other city departments, with stereo, his warming oil, the phones crashed, and we were able to use money in the IT budget to immediately fix the phone system, install a new phone system, which then took that same amount of money from other IT expenses that were already budgeted. Counsel Vacan referred to the city website shutting down, that happened a few days ago. Eileen, who's the IT project manager, put it on her personal credit card, had to be able to get the website back up as soon as possible, because there's no funds left in the IT budget, because it went to the phone system. This is important tonight, in that this is a current fiscal year bill, if it doesn't advance, then we'd have to come, continue to come back to the council to pay a previous fiscal year's bill, but these are, this isn't something to ask, we're not asking for money to do anything above and beyond what we've had in IT over the last several fiscal years, so this is just an accounting practice, to be able to pay the bills, pay our vendors, other, other than the city website, Wally Computer, who are working directly with the police department, and the fire department, and other IT expenses, and we're just waiting to be able to pay the bill.
Counselor A.
Yeah, I'm gonna support this. I think the mayor was in front of us some time ago regarding the, when the phones went down, it was for, they said it was not for any specific reason, but the phones were outdated to begin with, so it's good to have updated software. Chief Nayswenger came in and talked about the upgrading of the police department's phones, and I asked him, I go, "What do you think of the company?", and he thought it was a great company, so I'll be voting in favor of this tonight.
Counsel Bartley?
Point of order, how many votes, do we need?
You'll need nine, because it's the first time coming up, it's not, not tabled, you'll need nine votes.
Take us under discussion?
Counsel Bartley.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for this, Mr. President, because it's the right thing to do for the employees, and when I hear a story like that, I'm glad the mayor brought that up, I really appreciate Eileen stepping up. So why do we have any free cash?
What do we have in free cash?
We have, we have free cash, because some of us are bold enough to make some cuts, and that, at the appropriate time. So I'm asked, I'm asked now to go ahead and use the free cash, which fortunately, we voted, made a lot of cuts in the last fiscal year, so we could have free cash, but there's those of us that won't make, that won't make a darn cut for anything, as much as you beg and borrow. And so now, here we are, now we've come full circle, Mr. President. So I appreciate this being brought up, I appreciate the council's work on this, I just want to point it out, that any cuts we make, it's never, there's never a vindictiveness behind it, it's just for the benefit of the city, and for emergencies, just as this, so employees don't have to put public costs on their private credit card, that's what this came down to. So, but for us not having the free cash, I mean, what's she supposed to have, a floating $79,000 credit card bill on her, on her, on her credit card? I mean, I mean, I know, I know I'm talking, you know, not to the choir here, but it's just, it boggles my mind, and I felt obligated to emphasize that, Mr. President, thank you.
Anyone else? Motion, Counsel McGivern?
I don't disagree with what Counselor Bartley is saying, but I do have to add to the story, that's not the only reason that there's free cash, that's part of it, you know, because the deficit last year, or the deficit this year of the $400,000 that we cut this week, would be items that if it remained in the budget, that would have to be paid for throughout the course of the year, and then, of course, we'd have to offset, balance the budget with an offset from, from some revenue in the halfway through the year before we go into the third quarter. But the other reason we have free cash is money that is in the budget, that is not used. A person retiring, a person leaving a position, that position is not filled immediately. Over time, that is watched carefully by a department head, or kept, or frozen by the mayor at a given point in time, where it can be returned to the budget, a purchase that doesn't get made. There's a lot of reasons for free cash, not just the, although budget cuts are part of it, but it's not the only reason.
There's no further discussion, the motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading, it's seconded. Clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer of $79,000 from free cash to the line items that I spoke of. We'll stay, once again, alphabetical order. Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Labor Martinez?
Yes.
McGee? Yes. McGivern?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
What's your vote, you've approved the transfer.
Mr. President, can we suspend, take 12 and 13 together, send 12 to ordinance and 13 to DGR?
Second.
Second.
Why don't we just, motion would be to take 12-
Take 12, 12 table.
Take it off, the, motion is to send 12 to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? 13, from Counsel Bartley, to DGNR.
Second.
Yep. Motion to send DGNR, all those in favor?